I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Calquash Parish Police Jury for Thursday, October 19, 2023. If you would, please take a moment to silence your phones. And if you wish to speak on any item that's on tonight's agenda, we ask that you fill out a little blue slip you'll find there at the front of the room. Once you get it filled out, turn it in to anyone here at the staff desk. We're going to have the invocation and pledge of allegiance by Mr. Brain. Please stand.
Let's pray. God, we love you. We just thank you for today. Father, we thank you for all that you do in each and every one of our lives. We just thank you for this opportunity to be able to stand up here, Father, and serve and, and just pray tonight that the decisions we make, Father, please you. We ask all these things in Christ Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Yes, sir. Mr. Abshar, Mr. Andropon, Mr. Beres, Mr. Barti, Vice President Brain, Mr. Burley was unable to attend this evening, and so was Mr. Gillyree, Mr. Hayes. Mr. Hayes?
Oh, here. Thank you.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Markentale?
Here.
Mr. Rishard?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Stelly?
Here.
Mr. Tremonti?
President.
And President Landry.
Here.
You do have a call.
Thank you, Ms. Kathy.
You're welcome.
We're going to move up item three. If that, is that okay, Mr. McMillan? Okay. Just wanted to make sure. 3A, adopt a resolution approving the 2024 Calquash Parish Road and Drainage Trust Fund grants in the amount of $2,998,000 as followed. Do we need a motion on each bullet, Sam, or we can just do them?
Move on three.
Make a motion.
There you go. Second.
One was consolidated Gravity Drainage District Number One, West Calquash, $500,000. Number two, Consolidated Gravity Drainage District Number Two, East Calquash, $500,000. Three is the City of Lake Charles for $1,166,400. Number four, City of Sulphur, $170,800. Number five, City of Westlake, $229,600. And number six, the Town of Benton, $431,200. I got a motion by Mr. Tremonti, second by Mr. Markentale on all bullets. Is there any discussion? I think we're going to take some pictures and hand some big checks out. Any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. Who's up, Jessica?
Gravity Drainage District Number One.
All right.
And our Westside, please.
Westside.
Westside.
She likes him.
It's okay, man.
How you doing, sir?
Let me ask you something.
Don't forget the wide angle lens because I'm in it.
One, two, three? One, two, three?
What do we catch, Chris?
I'm saying like having Gilmore.
Gravity Drainage District, Southside.
You going east side?
Yes, that's me.
Right here. One, two, three?
City of Lake Charles? Am I Lake Charles, sir? Lake Charles, sir?
Come on back. Is it real? I could give the Kelly.
Don't you have something else?
I'll give Kelly. City of Lake Charles.
City of Lake Charles, not you.
Look right here. One, two, three? One, two, three?
City of Sulphur? Sulphur?
I want to go there with you now.
There we go. There we go.
Stand up for Burley.
How crooked.
What did I get on that track?
One, two, three? One, two, three?
That's the west side.
And yes, yeah, he's eighty-eight and a half. He'll be eighty-nine in April. Yeah, everything happened. He's starting. And he walks, and he'll be in the house if he doesn't drive very well. I don't, but, but three, four blocks.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, but still.
I will. I will get an IOU. We ran out. Totally. We ran out of Lake Charles. Used it all. Lake Charles, we ran out. We give you an IOU.
We going back, Mr. President?
You and, uh, who was? Was he getting the IOU to Quinton? No.
We won't take him.
Yeah. Yeah, we just moved up 3A.
That would be some good.
Okay, go back to 1A. Approve applications for liquor and beer permits. Mr. Crane and his staff recommends eleven renewal applications and one new application be approved. Got a motion by Mr. Abshar, second by Mr. Barti. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. 1B, adopting ordinance, rescinding ordinance number 7580, which ordered demolition of one manufactured home at 748 Joshua Ryan Street in Sulphur.
Move on 1B.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Tremonti, second by Mr. Stelly. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. 1C, adopting ordinance condemning and authorizing the demolition and removal of one manufactured home located at 5168 L.A. Little Road in Carless.
Move.
Is there anyone in the audience here to speak on 1C, 5168 L.A. Little Road in Carless? Mr. Crane, enlighten us.
Mr. President, we, Mr. Myers, we've been working with Mr. Myers and, and this, obviously, this structure is not going to be perfect. So he's gotten it to a point where it is closed to the public. He's put in all windows and the door is new, and he's put in siding to this structure. And I, in, in our opinion, I think we can remove it from the condemnation list. There are a few things that we're gonna, that, that we're gonna work separately that he needs to get corrected. But I think as far as it being condemnable, I think he's at a point where I think we can recommend it not be condemned.
So it's barely uncondemned?
It's, it's, it's right on the line, Mr. President.
Let's hope the wind doesn't blow more than ten miles an hour. So...
Hey, it looks better. It looks better than it ever has.
What was your motion? I think you made it.
I'm going to move to remove it from the condemnation list.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Beres, second by Ms. Andropon, to remove it from the list. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. 1D, authorize the Director of the Division of Planning and Development to notify the following property, property owners to show cause at a public hearing on December 14, 2023, as to why the structures on the properties as stipulated should not be condemned. Number one, 1029 Parish Road, Moss Bluff. Number two, 1158 Belfill Road, Moss Bluff. Number three, 7531 Flounder Drive in Lake Charles. Number four, 2529 Carlo Henry Road in Lake Charles. Number five, 9620 Simon La Blue Road in Lake Charles. Number six, 7798 Elliott Road, Lake Charles. Number seven, 3550 Pine Beetle Lane in Sulphur. Number eight, 2620 May Street in Westlake. Number nine, 3583 Ash Drive in Sulphur. Number 10, 3505 Palm Drive in Sulphur. Number 11, 3518 Palm Drive in Sulphur. And number 12, 3519 Palm Drive in Sulphur. I had a motion by Mr. Abshar and a second by Mr. Andropon on all bullets. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. 2A, approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the police jury dated September 21, 2023. Got a motion by Mr. Stelly, second by... Mr. Lewis. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. 3A, we already did. We're going to go to 3B. Adopt a resolution approving a professional engineering contract for professional engineering services for the Calquash Parish Master Transportation Thoroughfare Plan. Got a motion by Mr. Beres, second by Mr. Hayes. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries.
Move on 3C.
3C, adopt a resolution approving an amendment to the Professional Traffic Engineering and Signal Design Services Contract to include additional services for the L.A. Highway 27 Corridor Project. Got a motion by Mr. Andropon, second by Mr. Beres. Mr. Markentale. Somebody quickly tell me what this is because that's state highway.
Ask Mr. Bruce to come up and give you a little explanation, Mr. Markentale.
Please state your name and position with the parish, please.
John Bruce, Calquash Parish Engineer. Ms. Markentale, appreciate the question. This is part of the CPTI program, Calquash Parish Transportation Initiative that the police jury several years back authorized us to undertake. It is addressing several select intersections throughout the parish that are on state routes that have been identified as potential areas that need improvement of, of the flow of traffic. And this is on the Highway 27 corridor. I believe it addresses High Hope Road and Houston River Road intersections with L.A. 27.
Thank you. Okay, is there any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. 3D, adopt resolutions approving active sale agreements for the Tom A Bear Road Bridge Replacement Project. Got a motion by Mr. Beres, second by Mr. Abshar. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. 3E, adopt a resolution approving a permanent servitude from the police jury to Port Arthur Pipeline LLC for future pipeline improvements located in North Moss Bluff. Got a motion by Mr. Markentale, second by Mr. Rishard. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. 3F, adopt a resolution approving a utility and drainage servitude agreement for the relocation of sewer lines. Got a motion by Mr. Stelly, second by Mr. Rishard. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. 3G, adopt a resolution requesting that the bridges located on Louisiana Avenue and Peacock Road be added to the federal off-system bridge replacement and rehabilitation program. Got a motion by Mr. Andropon, second by Mr. Barti. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. 3H, adopt a resolution approving the submittal of a loan application to the Louisiana Department of Health on behalf of the Water Works District Number Five awards three and eight for capacity improvements and infrastructure upgrades. Got a motion by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Hayes. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. 3I, adopt a resolution for one, renaming a portion of J. Clovis Road to Mossville Way, and two, establishing the new public road from Wallace Road to East Houston River Road as Mossville Way. I had a motion by Mr. Markentale, second by Mr. Tremonti. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries.
Move on 4A.
4A, approve payment of all current invoices and advise regarding monthly and or quarterly budget to actual comparisons. I got a motion by Mr. Andropon, second by Mr. Barti. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. 4B, action on bids for bulk oil. Staff recommends the bids of Lord Oil Company Inc., Megaz Fuel and Lubricants and Pumpelli Oil Acquisition be accepted. Got a motion by Mr. Barti, second by Mr. Beres. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. 4C, adopt a resolution on bids for striping of various roads. Staff recommends a bid of Nation Services Company Inc. in the amount of $685,886.25 be accepted. Got a motion by Mr. Tremonti, a second by Mr. Stelly. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. 4D, adopt a resolution on bids for Portland cement, concrete, joint, and patching of various roads. Staff recommends the bid of Progressive Construction Company LLC in the amount of $765,594 be accepted. Got a motion by Mr. Rishard, second by Mr. Tremonti. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. 4E, action on bids for a mosquito control unmanned aircraft vehicle system. Staff recommends the bid of Target Specialty Products in the amount of $62,405 be accepted. Got a motion by Mr. Hayes, second by Mr. Lewis. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. 4F, action on bids for three 2023 or newer one-half ton extended cab pickup trucks for use by the Division of Engineering and Public Works. Staff recommends the low bid of Courtesy Ford in the amount of $119,943 be accepted. Y'all are excited about that one.
Move on that.
Okay.
So move.
Got a motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Abshar. Hey, we saved some money. Is there any discussion? Go ahead, Mr. Markentale. One question. If we have trouble with these trucks, which there's more than this one, do they have to be brought back to Harvey, Louisiana?
No, sir. We, we certainly, we do a lot of our service in ourselves that we can service here.
Any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. 4G, action on bids for one 2023 or newer one-half ton extended cab pickup truck. Staff recommends a low bid of Ford of Harvey in the amount of $39,354 be accepted.
Move on 4G.
Got a motion by Mr. Lewis and a second by Mr. Stelly. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. That was H? Yes. So we're on I. Action on bids for one... No, we're on H. Okay.
Yeah, you just did G.
I apologize. Action on bids for two 2023 or newer one-half ton regular cab pickup trucks. Staff recommends a low bid of Courtesy Ford in the amount of $69,994 be accepted.
Move on 4H.
Got a motion by Mr. Stelly, second by Mr. Lewis. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. 4I, action on bids for one 2023 or newer one-half ton extended cab pickup truck. Staff recommends a low bid of Ford of Harvey in the amount of $39,354 be accepted. Got a motion by Mr. Abshar.
Second.
Second by Mr. Stelly. Is there any discussion? Go ahead, Mr. Markentale. You're up. Let's, let's make sure these trucks got tires on them. Hey, let's hope so. I'm sure they do. Any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. 4J, adopt a resolution accepting Coach Williams Drive extension from Old Spanish Trail to Houston River Road as substantially complete. Got a motion by Mr. Tremonti, second by Mr. Markentale. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. 4K, adopt a resolution accepting Amaco Road Bridge Replacement Project as substantially complete. Got a motion by Mr. Stelly, second by Mr. Rishard. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries.
Move, we're going to executive.
Second.
5A, consider of going into executive session to discuss Lindsey Futch versus R. Morehead Construction. I have a motion by Mr. Rishard, second by Mr. Hayes. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. We are in executive session. We are in executive session.